Okay, welcome everyone. Our meeting is now called back to order and we will go to our CTE Center update with Carl Lepelman, our Chief Academic Officer, Michael Baker, our Chief Operations Officer, Larry Davis, our Principal of CTE Center, and Patrick Martinez, our interim Executive Director of Facilities.
Good evening. President Galbraith, members of the Board, Dr. Cleveland, can you hear me? Okay, good, sorry. It's been a while since we've talked CTE here and it was really a good night. I remember the partnership with CNM and two boards here together and so we thought, at your request, tonight would give you two pieces actually tonight. As you look at the agenda, if we go to the first slide, please. Can I go back to that first slide? Thank you. Really want to look at two things tonight. The district-wide report card, and actually Larry Davis has worked very hard with his staff to look at CT district-wide as well as look at an update on the RPS CNM partnership in that the transition program we've talked about that's going to be at CNM Rio Rancho as well as Mike Baker and Patrick Martinez talking about where are we at with the architect, the design, how the charrette go, timelines, those types of things. So I'll turn it over to Larry, we'll talk a little bit. Well, before I do, we would like to share with you the strategic plan. I think you've seen this before and I do believe that as a district, as a group of leaders, you certainly lead the district, that we should really go back and look at our resources, see how we're expanding our resources to actually meet those goals. And two of the goals that we are going to be talking about this evening is really about staff excellence because if you don't develop high-quality career technical education instructors and actually attract and retain them, it won't matter. So I think that partnership is essential in doing that. And the second part is also that engagement. We started looking at engagement and innovation. You really want the classroom instruction to be what? Meaningful, relevant to what we're doing. Yes, certainly we want high rigor curriculum academic standards, but what does that mean for me as a student in terms of what is real world or meaningful in terms of my career later on in life? So that's really the focus of tonight and I'll turn it over to Larry Davis in terms of giving you that big, that large perspective and then we'll go to Mr. Baker. Thanks.
Thank you, Carl. Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Cleveland. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about something that's very near and dear to my heart. CTE is on the move. It's growing rapidly in this district and to be able to talk about it and show off what we're doing is just such an honor. So right now, we're going to go straight to the CT report card. What I like about the report card is it's how we provide accountability for our students and parents and I felt it fitting for me to provide that level of accountability for you all as well. And so what CTE does across the district, I'll call your attention to the highlighted green, those were arranged by school colors. And if you'll look down, the ones for Cleveland High School that are in green are programs that are unique to Cleveland High School. And if you go to the right of that, you'll go down, you'll see 2,104. That indicates that we have 2,104 students at Cleveland High School that are engaged in a CTE classroom. We've got 14 teachers teaching CTE at Cleveland High School as well. As we scroll down, again, the same scenario, the light green indicates classes that are unique to Rio Rancho High School. Scroll down a little more, we see that we have 2,059 students setting foot in the CTE classroom and we have 17 teachers at Rio Rancho High School as well. We also have two students that are taking part in our after-school auto shop opportunity from independent high school. We had one from cyber last year, but this year we do not have any to report. So if we look at the high school totals, we see that we've got 4,165 students with 32 teachers at our high school level. But our department supports past the high school, we go into the middle school. So if we go down a little bit more, we've got various programs. We've got family and consumer science, woodworking at Rio Rancho Middle School, robotics across the district. And in a nutshell, we've got 6,815 students involved in a CTE classroom right now. Very proud of that number and I'd like to see it continue to grow. Next slide, please. So as a snapshot of our budget, we've been tracking that budget. I got here last year, so this is my second year, but I wanted to see where we've been as a trend and you'll see a pretty sharp curve there. This year, we've got $1.6 million under management. And to give you an idea on where that money comes from, I'd like to read that list. We are given, because this district places a high priority on CTE courses, so we're given an operational budget. But past that, we rely heavily on grant money. So we've got the Perkins Grant, the Next Gen Grant. We participate in Intel Grants. We received junior appropriations money. We have Sandoval County Commission and one of our bigger grants that we have under management this year is our Innovation Zone Grant and that one was $750,000 all by itself. It's also noteworthy that from my office, we created a purchase order requisition so we can monitor who's requesting what across the district. And we have, to this point of the year, produced more than 300 purchase orders out of my office for items to deliver to both middle schools and high schools across the district. Next slide, please. So as you know, a big part of CTE and our strategic plan is getting kids ready for college and career. And it's certainly a goal of CTE to be able to provide industry-recognized certifications. And I'm very proud to present to you today that we have done just that. At the beginning of this year, I worked with a company called Precision Exams and we purchased a testing platform. And if we can go to the next slide, please. Whereas we didn't have any industry-recognized certificates for students last year, this year we have 284 students that have earned an industry certificate in areas including automotive, precision exams, auto service fundamentals. We are currently doing OSHA 10 for our auto students. We are doing criminal justice exams at Cleveland High School, FFA various exams. We've done culinary arts and robotics across the district for a total of 284 certificates for students. With these certificates, we do print them on heavy paper, we present them to the students and they certainly are proud of them. We're proud of them for earning those. But I have to believe that when my conversations with industry partners, those certificates and a resume take our kids to the front of the line when it comes to employment because it shows that they've done something, they've accomplished something and they get to present that in the confidence of having done so. It doesn't stop there. We do have kids that are earning their CPR Heart Saber and American Heart Association, CPR and First Aid. Last year, we had 101 students doing that at Rio Rancho High School with teacher Chelsea Mont and this year, we were able to certify our new pathway coordinator to teach the teachers. And Shelley has also certified. So this year, we have 111 kids that have earned those certificates as well. You can see, we've got a lot going on district-wide. Very proud of the work we're doing, but I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the people that are doing the work with me. Susan Hara Mio is our Department Administrative Assistant and I indicated Susan is creating more than 300 purchase orders district-wide and documenting and providing proof of procurement and just doing everything first-class. We're happy to work with her, very fortunate. Shelley Kinnonan is our new CTE pathway coordinator. Shelley's leading the charge on dual credit and she's actually out at the high schools. She's become a familiar face on campus and really working with the students on high school. Mr. Ben Spradlin is just a world-class spreadsheet creator and grant writer. I often joke and call him the Charlie Daniels of the spreadsheet, but he really is amazing. And then, of course, there's myself. So Ben's retiring at the end of the year, but I present that this is our team and I'm really proud of the work that this team is doing. As an indicator of that work, I'd like to take you to our very own Rio Rancho website. And this is the dual credit website where students and parents can go and look what's going on district-wide. What you see up there is a brochure that Shelley Kinnonan, our pathway coordinator, created, working with CNM to make sure we were using approved pictures and graphics. And this is something that we've made available for all freshmen across the district. We've done countless presentations during win time, during other planning periods at Cleveland High School. And this is an example of the work that we're doing. If you could scroll down. We've also got posters of this made where students can simply use their phone to scan the QR code and then request more information and then that's Shelley's cue to reach out and have a one-on-one meeting with those students. So we're working hard to populate the classes with our CNM collaboration, both in computer information systems and in welding. You can scroll down to the dual credit. I just wanted to show you that last year, when I got here, I wanted to make the process easier for our students. So we created a district-wide dual credit application and this year, we have modified that. So in a nutshell, we're capturing all student-relevant information, but we now have two certificate pathways, I mean, I'm sorry, two dual credit pathways. One of them is a certificate pathway where we know that if our students enter in their sophomore year, they will graduate from CNM with a certificate on one Saturday and then two weeks later graduate from Rio Rancho Public Schools. And it's just an amazing opportunity for our students. The other opportunity is the standalone dual credit opportunity. We've organized the website so you can see if they click on one of our existing pathways, it populates the list of classes that they can take. And we work with those students to make sure that they're getting all their instructional material and that they're comfortable with their pathway. What we really learned fast, though, is that the students need our help for about this long and then they, they're college students and they know what they're doing, but we do offer that continuous level of support for them. So along with the partnership with CNM, myself and Mr. Todd Rash and many, many other people have done a lot of work with CNM to say what this is going to look like so that we could inform potential students and their parents what this might look like. In our presentations, we talk about students go through seven periods in their traditional high school day, but I often show them, you're going to go first, second, third, fourth, and then you're going to go to college. And they tend to get a chuckle out of that, but I really want to emphasize that they're going to be a college student at that point. So what you see in front of you is a schedule of what that might look like for them. I know the time changes and schedule changes for the district are going to impact this. This was based on the current schedule, but they would attend first through fourth period, at which point it's a tight schedule, so they would participate in a lunch. We would pick up lunches and meet with them out at the center. They would eat their lunches at the, the center being the Rio Rancho CNM campus, I'm sorry, let me clarify that. And they would eat their lunches and then they would go be college students until approximately 2:05 and then they would come back to their home school to get on the bus to go home, to go to practice, to go whatever it is that they want to participate in. And that really is the beauty of this schedule. It's got many shining parts to it, but the students get to participate in school activities, clubs, organizations, and still be able to go to college at the same time. We've done, again, countless presentations. We were on Parent U and we feel like we're going strong and we're gaining good numbers on that, but we hope to wrap that up pretty quick here so that we would know exactly what we're working with and that we could reach out to parents and inform parents of every bit of what this is going to look like and to reinforce the commitment that the students, in order to earn that college certificate, have to stay within the program for three years or until they graduate. So, all right. So we've done a lot of work with CNM and it is exciting work and it's work that's innovative and it's work that needs to be done. And in my opinion, it's work that makes us best-in-class as a school district. And sometimes you can stand back and say, this is what we're working on right here. But I'm hoping that after this presentation, you will see that the true story, the true image of what we're working with is this next slide. And this really is indicative of what CTE looks like in this district. Again, we align ourselves with our strategic plan of getting our kids college and career-ready. We're pushing certificates. I have to tell you, just the increased collaboration that I've experienced working with our principals, with the teachers, it's just an amazing group. But we have to continue focusing on the entire iceberg and then get that laser beam focused on what we are doing right now with CNM, which truly does make us best-in-class. Moving forward.
Thank you. Want me to take this one? Yeah, thank you, Larry. As you can see that, actually, weekly Larry and Todd Rash meet. Weekly, I'm there, we meet, we talk about where we at, where we need to go. It takes that much planning and you can see the work, great team. I think the work of Shelley, working out, making sure that the council is engaged and that she's out there in the presentations. Thank you, Larry, for all you've been doing. Regarding moving forward, really, we're all looking forward to what? That iceberg, that tip, it's got to open. It's an opportunity that sets us apart across the region. And Mike and Patrick will be talking about shortly. The idea of building both models, the certificate program, making sure that certificates are recognized by industry and that dual credit program. One thing I'd like to see, and I know that President Galbraith has talked about and in policy we have done, is how can we expand dual credit? And one of the thoughts we've had is that summer, that summer session. We're going to need that schedule anyway as we work with CNM as a partner. So we need to look at it in other career pathways that we currently have in our high schools. We believe, and Dr. Cleveland has talked about multiple times, we are in an area that is about healthcare. Over 50% of our employees in this, in the city are in healthcare. And so we know about 30 to 40% of our students want, they have interest in it, they have talent and they want to take that, that actually strength to a talent. And so how do we get more students in that nursing program to get first in line, as Larry talked about earlier, so they can go into nursing program at UNM? So that pathway is, really, it sits below that waterline, it sits there, but we need to do more work and I think that work has to start now as we start with CNM and UNM Health Sciences. One thing that I'm, and you've talked about and we've all talked about, is internship programs. What does that look like? And how can we increase our partnerships with local businesses? And I think that Shelley's done a good job, we can do more. And I think we need to track and monitor how many students are in those programs and completing those programs. And how's it look in the program studies? Are we going to ask all students to have some type of work-related service, some kind of career-based experience in the Rio Rancho Public Schools? That's a question we need to ask ourselves in terms of the profile of the graduate. What do we want that to look like for our students? And last, that vertical program. What we haven't done well yet is really start at middle school. And we really need to start having more offerings at middle school. Dr. Cleveland and I talked just yesterday, Friday and today about what can we do to expand electives and other types of opportunities such as in career technical in the middle school level and get kids more engaged in what they want to do in their future. So with that, I'll turn over, actually, maybe we should entertain a few questions about this and then get into the second part of the conversation about where are we at with the complex.
Okay, thank you. So up to this point, Gary, you have some, go ahead.
Just a quick question for Larry. Were any of the kids involved in the skills competition last week, the state competitions, by any chance?
Yes, sir, we sure did. We had our auto students involved and John Booker from Cleveland High School took a group of students for criminal justice as well. John did have some placements, I don't remember those at the top, off the top of my head, but yes, we did participate in that.
That's exciting. Maybe we could honor those kids, you know, which would be really cool. Congratulations to them and to the teachers. That's a really tough competition in the state of New Mexico against other kids. The other kind of comment I had was the American Health Association and just a comment about, I know you're working with Todd every week and now that he's the athletic director, you know, there's so much that's happened in our country with what the coaches need to be trained in. I know the whole UNM athletic department went through it this last week with the defibrillator and just all the crisis we've had. So just a kind of a suggestion. And then the last thing is, I know Beth might still go, but are we still attending NAOP consistently? So the internships can flow pretty easy. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Jessica Tiley and Noreen Scott.
No, I don't have any further questions. Nice presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say, when I was looking at the presentation earlier today, I thought that iceberg, I was looking at the iceberg and I was like, oh, this has Larry's name written all over it. And I was watching your face as you put it on. So anyway, I do want to just put that shout out for dual crediting. I just think it's really, really important as we move forward. So thank you for paying attention to those things. As I see these private schools and these charter schools and all those things, I think if we're going to continue to grow Rio Rancho Public Schools, that is something that we just need to keep looking at and keeping on top of. So thank you so much for doing that.
Yeah, actually, we've already talked to Mike Baker and we're looking at, we get our instructional material dollars and that pays for a lot of the dual credit instruction materials. We're actually starting to budget right now for additional money so we can actually get into that summer program with more students in it. So that's important to budget those resources.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. So thank you so much. And Dr. Cleveland, do you have anything at this point?
Just to add, you're absolutely right. If we are to remain viable, we are going to have to be creative and we're going to have to think how we attract and maintain our enrollment, keep our students. And so we are trying to look at different ways that we may be able to offer some specialized opportunities for students. I do want to just really briefly speak to the point that Larry made about running programs on grants. And so that's just downright scary. One year, the money's here, the next year, the money isn't there. We need to continue to work with our delegation. I want, you know, to certainly do a shout out to Senator Brandt, who worked very hard on a weighted unit. It got far through the session, but didn't get quite through. We'll go back and try to make another run at that. But CTE classes are more expensive to operate and anyone that looks at the equipment and things that go in there realizes that you now they have to purchase the equipment and maintain the equipment in order for it to be safe. So continue to work on that weighted unit with our delegation. I do also, though, want to point out, and Beth may also address that in her presentation, but we did, we were successful in getting a differentiated compensation for teachers in CTE. And it will make the jobs much more competitive and more attractive to people that are not in the traditional fields of education. So I think that was a really big win, this legislative session, and I think it will help us long-term. You know, we will not necessarily be hiring. CNM is doing some of the hiring for the new facility, but we still have to hire for the other programs that are in our regular schools. So this will benefit Rio Rancho in some of those areas as well. And so it's, you know, real kudos and thanks to our delegation for getting that through. And then we have obviously, let's see, there was one other point. I guess not. That's it, thank you.
Well, we can, we'll come back to you when we finish the presentation in just a second. I know Secretary Scott has a question.
Just a quick question. When we open our CTE facility, will some of the activity that's going on in our existing high schools move into the CTE building or will we continue to have programs here and there?
Thank you for that. And so it's been in our planning all along that we want to leave the things that are working in our comprehensive high schools intact. We've really looked at this with the strategic eye in terms of new programs, high-demand programs for the district that will be housed there. So the answer to your question is the high schools programs will stay intact.
Thank you for your answer, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. You guys can go ahead and continue on.
Madam President, Dr. Cleveland, members of the school board, so just to wrap up the presentation, when it comes to projects, I always like to say we're on budget, on time. Unfortunately, we don't know the financial picture or the renovation cost at this time. We hope to get that in the very near future. And as construction costs skyrocket these days, we're a little uneasy about what that number is going to look like. But whatever it looks like, I think we'll be, we'll be okay to proceed certainly with the project. We do plan on using current bond funds to finish the project. If it's not going to be sufficient financing, we may have to roll that into operational or potentially the next bonding cycle. In regard to timing, our plan has been to open up January of '25 and the good news is that we are on time. And one of the bigger, or in the beginning, the ed spec process has been completed, it's been completed for quite some time. We will get you a copy of that. That is a kind of a living document, however, and as we move forward, that there will be some adjustments to that. The architects have moved into the next phase, which is actually putting the schematic plan together. And I'll turn it over to Patrick for some additional information.
Okay, thank you, Mike. President Galbraith, Dr. Cleveland, members of the board. So just like Mike said, you know, we did have an ed spec process. It was a charrette, kind of a visioning, a day of visioning, which was actually really, really useful and we got a lot of information out of it. And so what was really nice about that is we were able to come up with guiding principles to really talk about, you know, based on what everyone was seeing and kind of where everyone wanted to see this project go. And really, those revolved around some of the things that Larry and Carl talked about, pathways and apprenticeship, earn while you learn, and then some things a little more internal to the building, flexibility, safety, cross-pollination, this idea that, you know, that the students are learning from each other and seeing what other students are doing and really, you know, building on that. Currently, like Mike said, we are in the schematic design phase and really where we're at with that is taking a lot of that information that was in the ed spec, which is a living document. And by that, it means there's a page, and when you guys see it, you'll see a sheet basically for every single room that has information for every single room that will be in there. And so as we get more information, as we meet with different user groups, we'll update that based on those conversations. And so right now, we're really diving into some of those early conversations with user groups, security, the high school side, CNM side. It's been a hugely collaborative process, so many people involved. We have weekly meetings and so it's really moving along. And so like Mike said, we are on schedule, we should have that schematic design phase done at the end of this month and ready to really start diving into what the building, you know, it's going to take shape. So I think we're in a good place and, you know, just to kind of go back, I think that, to what Larry was saying, you know, the collaboration has really, really started to build and it's really built momentum and so it's been a really fun process to be a part of. And that's pretty much it.
Okay. Go for questions? Yeah, I guess ready for questions? Go ahead, Gary.
Mike, January of 2025, what is our agreement with CNM? When will the auto mechanics building be ready to be open? Or Patrick?
So I know that they're currently, I think they just got their purchase order. So they're getting ready to start. In fact, we've been sharing a lot of information about our standards, some of the information that we've already built so that they can start on the early programming for their automotive. But to my understanding, they're still on schedule to be open in August of 2025.
August, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Noreen Scott.
I understand that you all are very excited about being on time, but I'd like to point out, we've owned the building for 16 months. So I'm kind of curious if there's any way to step this up and get into that building sooner. People are looking at that building and wondering why it is taking us so long to move forward. So if you could kind of address those thoughts for us right now, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Madam President, Dr. Cleveland, members of the school board. We did make the purchase of the building very quickly, as you know. The difficulty that the district had was trying to calculate what was the program, what was going to be inside the building as far as the actual curriculum for each, you know, for each trade. And so it took time to develop the curriculum piece because you need to know what you're going to offer in the building before you actually start building. And secondly, it took us quite some time to actually develop that partnership with CNM. And so that was a very difficult process. You have two entities with really two different missions and that... And, and that process took much longer, I think than we anticipated. But I think the end result was good. We did develop the partnership. We are going to have quite a bit of cost, cost sharing. That is going to save funding for our district and yet give a lot of the, the advantage of the, the program, the larger automotive, diesel and EV. That we didn't originally plan and, and some other, some other programs in that facility.
Thank you. I appreciate you addressing that because I get lots of questions about it and I think it's good to have it on the record. The other thing I'd like to request that we have a very brief report once a month so that we can have an idea of how things are moving along. And, and if there's any energy we could put behind it to get it to move a little quicker. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll, I'll go to you in just a second. I'm going to run over to Jessica. No questions. Okay. And Dr. Cleveland?
I do want to, and I have been putting some things in the superintendent's report. And so be also looking there because I have put some information and Mike has provided that information to me and I tried to include it as well. I think two, two quick things. The, we are adding a, we are putting an ad alternate in the bid. To see if, if anyone can do it more rapidly. And we have heard from some folks in the community that it could be done. So when we put it out, we'll see if they step up and, and are true to their own words. So I think they can do it faster. We would love to have them do it more rapidly and they'll have an opportunity. But again, it'll be an ad alternate because we obviously don't want to negatively impact the overall cost of that facility. Or have to cut it because we're moving it quicker. But my hope, and it may just be a hope, is that somebody might step up and say, we can do it a little bit quicker. And would give some credit for that as well. So yeah, there's very quickly. It has, it has been very strong. You know, a strong partnership. It took a long time to, to get to that point with CNM. I think it was a good decision that we went that way. And the more we worked through it, the more I think we're all convinced that that really was the better way to go. We are looking to really kick up in the fall, our conversations about the health professions. We figure everyone has enough on the plate right now. They're finishing out this year. Want the same level of commitment looking toward the health profession, starting in the conversations this fall. The difference with that would be, we would be looking this time at perhaps using their facility in Rio Rancho. And that of course is up to them, whether they want to use that facility. But it has some real potential. It has some, some nursing labs, some things already in that building. But they have indicated a strong desire to continue the conversation. And they too think kicking it off in the fall would be a good time to, to, you know, letting us all kind of get this under, underway and get that established before we look at that second level. But had several conversations with Samantha of CNM and she said they're, they're ready to begin that conversation.
Super.
That's wonderful. Go ahead.
Just one comment. I mean, when we're talking about the feasibility of completing the project sooner, I just want to keep in everybody's mind. We couldn't start something mid semester though. So when we're partnering with CNM, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, there, it would have to be a whole semester change. In the completion of the building to be able to start those programs early because of the way they're structured, correct? So I mean, the likelihood of it being that early is probably not going to happen, but.
No, but I'm glad to hear that there's some efforts being put into that.
Yeah, I just, I'm thinking about the public's perception as well of, you know, if it got finished three months early, it's not going to equate to students starting those programs. Because it can't be done in the middle of the semester.
Thank you. Dr. Cleveland too, when you're putting it, and don't get in, hopefully no one gets annoyed with me with this one, but we're putting it in the superintendent report. How about we just bold CTE in that superintendent report whenever it's anything in regards to CTE. I think that would be, I think that would be great. So any other, any further questions from anyone on the board? Any last comments before? Okay. Thank you so much. Very much appreciate the update on, on CTE. I'm very excited about it. Okay, we'll now go to approve the consent agenda. Oh, sorry. I marked it off. I'm sorry, Beth. I just, and I tried to remind myself, wait, that's not marked. 2023 Legislative Session Review. Beth Pendergrass, our Chief Communication Strategy and Engagement Officer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening, President Galbraith, Dr. Cleveland and members of the board. I'm here this evening to give you a little legislative update from our last session. First slide, please. Next slide. So just a quick session overview. It was again, a 90 day session ended on March 18th. April 7th was the last day for legislation to be acted on by the governor. And June 16th is the effective date for legislation that doesn't have any emergency clause or is appropriation based. There were 1,298 pieces of legislation introduced. 99 of those were education. 387 passed, 221 were signed, 13 vetoed and 30 pocket vetoed. Next slide. So over the session, I just wanted to take some time to thank the people who really worked hard this legislative session. Of course, I'd be remiss not to mention Chris Bolzano and his team. We had a lot of our priorities addressed this year at the legislative session and he worked very hard to keep us informed. And let us know what was going on and what we needed to do to push those forward. Also, every Monday, we met with a small team to really discuss the legislation and determine what we needed to let Chris know as far as pushing or opposing. And so the team was Dr. Cleveland, Lauren Hatch, David Mann, Renee Sosado. And then of course, we worked a lot with our leadership in our cabinet as different questions came up or we needed to review things specifically in regards to how they would impact the district. And a huge shout out to Lauren and David because they really did a great job of putting information together. And so thank you. Next slide. So I just wanted to go through some notable legislation for Rio Rancho Public Schools. There's a lot of information in here and I'm going to go through it kind of quickly. So at the end, I'll give you time to ask any questions. Of course, first House Bill 2, this is the general appropriation bill for education. We saw an 8% increase and some of the high points of that, there's 40 million non-recurring for career technical education and an increase in instructional material funding. I put that in red because that aligned with our priorities. There's also a 6% increase for staff wages. And then a few other, the educational assistance, which we'll get to later as well. House Bill 130, that's the one you've heard us talk about a lot this evening. That's the one that increases the instructional hours to 1140 for each level. Elementary, middle and high school. It allows for 60 hours of instructional or professional development with elementary and allows for 30 hours of professional development in the secondary schools. And then of course, anything we go over 180, there's some factors there that give us more money. So if we go 181 to 190 days. It's a factor of .012. And if we go over 191 through 205, there's a larger increase there. So some opportunities for additional funding if you have a longer calendar. Next slide. So the educational assistance salary increases. So that did pass. So the minimum is 25,000. It's important to note that it is for classroom EAs. And we have a lot of EAs that are not classroom EAs. So that's something we're going to need to look at. House Bill 199, that's increases the at-risk index, but it also, and this is something Kurt Schmidt's been working on for a number of years. Finally increases that fine arts factor that we've talked about in the past. So that helps with our fine arts. Our House Bill 533, that was the insurance that Dr. Cleveland talked about, the tiered system for insurance. And you can kind of see how that works out. Next slide. Healthy Universal School Meals. This one got a lot of media attention during the session. This will allow us to provide healthy meals for our students at no cost. I think last we talked to David, we were 44,000 in the hole with parents who weren't paying their bills. So that will eliminate that debt for us as well. So that's really important. And there's some other things with that bill as far as studying and moving forward with how we can provide fresh foods and local foods to our kids. Senate Bill 131, this was also under our district priority. This changes some of the funding to, with capital outlay. So we'll be able to improve our access to capital outlay funding because it eliminates offsets for school districts and reduces the local match. So that might free up some funding for us with our capital projects. Senate Bill 383, this changes the background check process. Next slide. Senate Bill 417, this is the one Dr. Cleveland mentioned, which is also Senator Brandt's bill that changes the vocational educational licensure track for teachers. House Bill 4, voting rights. You heard Peggy mention that we'll have to have holidays now for general elections or for local elections. That really doesn't go into effect until next year. So this year, you know, we, we didn't have to do it, but next year we will. House Bill 134 requires menstrual products in school bathrooms. So in high school and middle school, we'll have to make sure we have menstrual products available in every single female restroom. Or gender, non-gender specific restroom and at least one male restroom. And then in elementary, you have to have menstrual products available and at least one female restroom, one non-gender specific restroom and one male restroom. Senate Bill 307, licensed teacher prep. So that, that is teacher preparation affordability scholarship information. Next slide. Senate Bill 3 is family income index distributions. So this kind of adjusts a little bit how we can allocate our interventions. Bring up where, so we can specify where those need to be specifically. House Bill 481, some changes with our reading material funds that we can use those for PED approved elementary instructional materials. Next slide. Senate Bill 450, this is the school coach required CPR and AED training. A lot of this is already required right now for their certifications. So it'll be a minor change. And then we have a House Memorial 56. This one is, they're going to be studying high school start times. As you know, California this last year required all high schools to start after 8:30. So that's something that our state will be looking at. That's, that study is supposed to end in December, so they can address it next session. And then Senate Joint Memorial 14, that's just another look at how we can reduce the school reporting requirements. So that's just a quick look at some of the legislation that passed. Next slide. Couple of notable legislations that were vetoed. You heard a lot about the changes to graduation requirements. So that legislation was vetoed. Another really important piece of legislation that was vetoed was in House Bill 2. There was language that addressed our transportation density factor that would have given us almost 1.3 million towards our deficit in transportation. That's probably the furthest since I've been here that we've gotten with trying to see a fix in transportation. And that was line item vetoed by the governor. Yeah. So capital outlay projects, a lot of these you saw as we presented them as our list for capital outlay. Many of them were approved and funded. You can see a list here. I'm not going to go through each one. The next slide is really what I want to kind of talk about. Cause I bolded a lot. We have a lot of money here for CTE. 300,000 for access control, 300,000 for security cameras, 200,000 for the gunshot detection. And then the Department of Transportation actually received 850,000 for the access point for traffic entering and exiting the area there where CTE is. Next slide. And then also in the capital outlay bill, there's 65 million that's included for career technical education facilities and pre-K facilities. That'll be distributed to districts and then another 35 million for school safety and security infrastructure that will also be distributed to school districts. Next slide. Some junior bill appropriations that we saw, there's 75,000 for a dance program for low income at-risk youth in our district. 115,000 for equipment for CTE and 450,000 for vehicle equipment and supplies for CTE. So generally speaking, I feel like we had a really great session in regards to our priorities that we set as a district and you as a school board. I think we've made a lot of really great movement for CTE and we're going to continue to work on that during the interim and for next session. So I stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. I know Noreen Scott has a question. She's ready.
No, no, I just wanted to say thank you that it was a very concise report and it does look like we had a good, successful session.
Thank you. Jessica Tyler?
To echo that, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Gary Tripp?
I just have two things, I promise. So last week, I was able to come to the open forum with two of our legislators and Beth heard me say this, but I said it the next night at the regional school board meeting to Mr. Guian. I really think that the educational assistance were done wrong in the state of New Mexico. I think that Senate Bill 4, the benefit factors are not really doing justice to what the educational assistance need in the state of New Mexico. And I asked him and challenged him if next fall, they could come and sit with a couple of educational assistants after they get their first paycheck. And see the fact that they're not going to be getting the benefits that they talked and stated they would give them through the LFC reports for one whole year. And either the LFC or the governor's office, I think, did an injustice to the educational assistance in the state of New Mexico. Or people that don't make that much money, like custodians also. So that's yet to be seen, but I challenged them to ask them if they would really investigate that next fall when, when this, when that law is initiated. 25,000 is a starting point. And so I asked them that. I'm not really ready to celebrate that yet until we can do more justice for those people that deserve it. And then I, I also, at the regional school board meeting, just to let you know, I, I, I really demonstrated our dissatisfaction with the governor's office and the LFC. Or both and/or both, whoever wants to take it with the line item veto, where we have to take 1.9 million dollars this year out of our transportation budget. Out of our operational budget to support transportation. And that's not fair to our kids in the state of New Mexico. So maybe I challenge all of us to continue to work on that factor. Thank you.
No, thank you so much.
Thank you, Beth. That was a great report.
Yeah. And then, and Dr. Cleveland, did you want to give some?
Well, I, I think that to build on what Board Member Tripp has just said, I think the board needs to sit down in a planning session and we really need to talk about what our next steps are for transportation. There will be a, a study committee this year. We plan to be front row and center. Whether we're invited or not, I, I think we'll be invited. But you know, what, what the board wants to go with transportation. This veto was a really hard, hard thing to settle because it, it went through the legislature and the legislature approved it. We had a couple of districts that worked against us on that. And, and I think that's a conversation we need to have with our delegation about how we respond to that. But it is, it was a, it was disappointing. That being said, a lot of good things did occur and really thankful to our delegation for the hard work they've done on behalf of, of Rio Rancho. And what was the total dollars that came for CTE? If you put it all together, did you add that up?
I didn't add up CTE. We can go back to that slide. You mean in capital and junior bill appropriation?
It was significant is the point, I guess. And so it isn't all we needed, but boy, it's going to help. And so very appreciative of both the capital. We need to keep working on that weighted unit. But the really next big one is transportation. And, and again, I, I would like to have the board come together. Let's talk about what some of those options are. And you know, how we want to, to try to approach that. The argument was a density factor. Some felt like that wasn't really the problem that was wrong with, with transportation. They didn't like the one-year fix on it. That they were afraid that even, you know, districts that were getting all their money paid, all their transportation dollars paid. Were fearful they just might lose an increase and as opposed to not getting as much as they've had in the past. And so I understand that because costs have gone up. There's, there's no doubt about it. But it is a, it is a tremendous injustice to the children in this school district. And so I do think the board needs to give us some direction on where you want to go with this transportation this next year. But we have been assured we'll have a seat at the table and they are going to try to find a more equitable way. The, the challenge in New Mexico, as you are very much aware, is that every district is so different. One formula to fix it for everybody just doesn't seem to work very well. And so larger districts seem to be at the greater risk in this. We were short. Las Cruces was short. Albuquerque said they weren't short this year, but the reason they weren't short is they just didn't pick up or deliver kids in many areas. They still provide transportation. So we need to, we fight, we've got to find a state solution to this for all districts of all sizes. And so we will try to schedule a, a time we can work with Lauren and David and others and really examine where we want to go with transportation.
Yeah, you know, I mean, they have this, this House Memorial, is that what it's called? Right? For this study for early start. For this study for early start times. You know, I don't know what it would look like, but I think it would be good, especially for these districts who might kind of come up against us as these, as these things come up with their own, you know, those who represent them, to do a study on if this changes, how is that going to affect each of the districts and to get those things out? I think that would be a worthwhile thing because we don't want to take money away from any district. We don't want that to be a hardship for anyone, but we do need to be able to pay for our transportation in our district. And so however that looks and I, that maybe that's overstepping our boundaries as far as a district goes, but if, you know, if Santa Fe or someone could do some sort of, look into that and how is it going to affect our other districts and what can we do to fix that?
Well, the LFC is planning a committee this summer to start that, that conversation about what that would look like. And, you know, very respectfully, we reminded them that in the Yasi Martinez lawsuit, the judge ruled that transportation was to be paid in the state of New Mexico as were instructional materials. And both of those didn't happen last year. So, you know, I mean, I guess my thinking has always been when you have a court ruling, you try your best to comply with that court ruling. And so I think they're aware of that. It's just every year we get told one more year, you know, one more year, we'll fix it next year. And now it's been several years. And, and so you just look and say, well, these districts get theirs paid and these districts don't. How, that's just not very fair or very equitable. And so, but, but we will see where they go. And, and, you know, rightly so. The density factor isn't a really big issue in Las Cruces and yet they're short more money than we are. So there's obviously another factor in the formula that's playing into the Las Cruces school district. Though density was a factor, it's not nearly the factor it is for Rio Rancho. So how, you know, maybe we don't need a single formula that fits all. Maybe we need another process. The other thing that there's some discussion about too is, is something that I know is you all have talked about a lot and that's the open the door costs and then funding a distribution above that. In other words, paying for the, the open the door costs for all districts. And then above that, you start differentiating for different programs. And we've not had any opening for that discussion for several years and there appears to be an opening. Again, Senator Brand has, has pushed that issue for several years. So perhaps he's, he's getting some traction on that as well.
That's good. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll now go to approve the consent agenda.
This is Noreen Scott. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Board Member Tyler will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Noreen Scott and a second by Jessica Tyler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Okay, did you get that, Kim? Okay, good.
Let's say one more thing.
Yes, please.
I did like to say it, but wanted to say, I just want to thank Beth for all her work this year and Lauren and that team that they mentioned. We have never been able to stay on top of legislation as well as we have this year knowing where we stood, you know, with committees and things and communication with Chris was just really strong. And so Beth was the first contact and, but Lauren and David went over every single bill, looking at all the legal implications of that. I just want to mention how much time and effort, but it really made a difference. And we saw some things go through that maybe in the past would not have. So I just wanted to recognize the hard work that they have accomplished this year.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It was, it was a good, it was a good session. Okay, moving into business, our first item A is the Rio Rancho Public Schools Board of Education held a closed executive session at 4:00 PM on Monday, April 3, 2023, as permitted under Section 10-15-1H7 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. The matters discussed in the virtual closed meeting were limited only to those specified in the notice of the separate closed meeting. Next report, the Rio Rancho Public Schools Board of Education held a closed executive session at 4:00 PM on Monday, April 17, as permitted under Section 10-15-1H2 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. The matters discussed in the closed meeting were limited to only those specified in the notice of the separate closed meeting. We will now go to item C to consider the acceptance of the New Mexico Department of Health School Nurse Workforce Grant. And Lynn Wheeler, our Rio Rancho Public Schools Director of Nursing, will present.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Cleveland and members of the board. I come to you this evening requesting your approval of the New Mexico Department of Health School Nurse Workforce Grant that has been awarded to Rio Rancho Public Schools for $81,582.32. The School Nurse Workforce Grant is part of a financial assistance award of federal funds made available from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. The grant supports districts, school nurses, health assistants, and the management of emergency response of students with chronic illnesses, those experiencing COVID symptoms, and those that have post-COVID conditions. Approval of this grant means that we will be able to replace 23 outdated and expired or soon to expire automatic external defibrillators, also known as AEDs, which are currently in our schools. It will update our CPR training equipment that we use in our monthly trainings for district staff. It will provide CPR mannequins and AED trainers for the schools so that nurses and health assistants can train school staff and run drills. It will allow for the addition of AEDs to the Student Support Center, CTE, and the District Office Training Center, the building we are currently in. It will also provide a stipend to the health assistants, nurses, and resource nurse because they will need to retrain on the new equipment. And then once they are proficient, they in turn will need to retrain the school staff that had volunteered to be a part of the emergency response teams. With this information, I respectfully request your approval to accept the New Mexico Department of Health School Nurse Workforce Grant. I stand for any questions.
Any questions from the board?
This is Secretary Noreen Scott and I move approval or acceptance of the grant from the New Mexico Department of Health for the Nurse Workforce Training Grant, the workforce grant.
Gary Tripp, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Noreen Scott, a second by Gary Tripp. And Kim, will you take a roll call vote for us?
Yes, ma'am. Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Tripp?
Yes.
Board Member Tyler?
Yes.
President Calhrith?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Lynn. Dr. Cleveland, did you want to say?
No, that's not.
I know you said, so thank you so much. Okay, our next item is to consider the approval of the 2023-24 instructional calendar. Peggy Johnston, once again, will present.
Good evening again, Madam President, Dr. Cleveland and members of the board. So I'm here before you this evening to respectfully ask for the approval of the instructional calendar for the 23-24 school year as presented earlier. And I'll stand for any questions.
Any further questions?
I just want to make a comment. I do think that we should make an effort, whether we can't do it this year, but in the future, to bring back our early release Wednesdays. I think that's something that's nice for the students as well as the teachers. And I think it's something that people have enjoyed, although, you know, the other side of that is it creates issues for daycare sometimes for families. So I understand that that's a con to that, but I think it's something that is especially important for our professional development, for our teachers. So that's something I'd like to keep on our radar to try to reinstitute as quickly as possible.
Do you have a comment?
Just briefly, the statement is very clear. They would not approve the half days anymore. If you're talking about the half days that we had for?
No, I'm talking about early release Wednesdays.
The early release Wednesdays, we, there's no way short of going way into June or starting in July to get the number of hours that we're now required to have without giving out that Wednesday afternoon. So that's one of the challenges that we have that we're looking at will be if there's a way, but, but we're not there yet. If there's a way to give every elementary teacher a planning period every day, which they've never had. And so we're hoping that we may be able to accomplish that. Obviously, that would be up to the board and the budget and all of that. But we can't get the number of hours in, with the early Wednesday release, without going into June and going earlier in the year. It's a matter of just adding the hours up and we needed, that's the reason APS has also given up the Wednesday afternoons, is they too can't, they can't get the hours without it. So it's a hard choice, you know, hard choices to make because I think we use those Wednesday afternoons very well.
Yeah. Well, I was just under the impression that we were at the same number of hours this year for high school. I know elementary school hours increased some, but that for high schools and middle schools, we were already doing those, that same number of instructional hours. That didn't change.
Do you want to address that, Beth, or?
For shining stars.
Not, for shining stars, I think she's talking about secondary.
Right, I thought we met. I, that's what I'm saying. I think that there's some confusion.
I think that we have to do that for all levels in order to get the number of hours?
We have enough hours.
But we don't have enough days.
As is with early release. Reason we have to remove early release Wednesdays is looking at shining star hours and having to have.
And for transportation because of that.
But you can't, here's the reality of it. You can't take and give one level and take their Wednesday away and give it to the other levels and say they can have it, right? I mean.
I think it comes back to, to me, it comes back to the fact that our transportation hinders us in making decisions for instructional hours because I think that the hours are there for the instructional hours for elementary as well as middle with, it's just shining stars and the transportation to be able to give them their hours is hindering us from that. So I just want to, I mean, in your right, it might not ever be possible, but just wanted to throw it out there.
There's certainly feelings. You know, it's real interesting, Albuquerque, it was overwhelming to do away with Wednesday afternoons. When we surveyed our parents earlier this year, it wasn't, it wasn't that, we didn't get that overwhelming desire to, to, to close it out. But I don't know, I, I may have misunderstood it, but my understanding was if we, we would, we could have done, so what you're saying is we could have done the early release on Wednesday for secondary, but we would have had to have taken it away for elementary? Or was it true for all levels?
It was true of all levels, except shining stars.
Okay, all right. My apologies because I got that wrong.
Dr. Cleveland, it would have also shortened elementary lunchtime.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, so I think it's something to keep on the radar and to, to see. It is a nice, it's a nice break for our students and our teachers.
And it might be that when we do away with it, that people are fine with that. I just think it's something that our community's become accustomed to. I think it's nice for the morale for the teachers as well as the kids. And like I said, maybe it won't be missed, but something for us to revisit if, if, if possible. But with that, I'll make a motion to approve the 2023-2024 instructional calendar as presented.
And I'll second it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Jessica Tyler and a second by Gary Tripp. I wrote your name, both your first and last in like one.
Gary Tripp?
Yeah. Kim, can you take a roll call vote for us?
Secretary Scott? Member Tripp?
Yes.
Board Member Tyler?
Yes.
And President Calhrith?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, our next item is to consider the approval of the 2023-24 board calendar. And Kim Vesely, our assistant to the superintendent, will present.
She's coming not to beat a dead horse, but it goes back to that issue of transportation. What that 2 million costs us.
Yeah.
If we had that 2 million, it might be a little bit different story. One other comment too, is when you go to the planning periods, that gives teachers a planning every day, which our elementary teachers have never had and our secondary teachers have always had. But what it takes away, it's giving the planning, but what it takes away is collaboration time and you lose that. So, sorry, go ahead.
Just real quickly, I do want to just tell.
Peggy, thank you. We do appreciate the work that you do very much. It's not, it's not the most thankless job. It's just the, you just get a lot of pressure. So we do, we do appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kim?
President Calhrith, members of the board, and Dr. Cleveland, I have for your perusal the board calendar for 2023-24. This is the schedule of board meetings and other activities in which the board participates to the extent that we can determine it. What this does, among other things, is it provides public notice of our meetings so that when we publish this and we send it to the media, it constitutes legal notice of the board's regular meetings. This calendar tried to adhere pretty closely to the second and fourth Monday, which has become established for the board. And there's only a couple of deviations from that. One is in March, where with the timing of spring break, we actually scheduled two meetings back to back because I think we have now discovered that we have to have two meetings in March or early April this time of year. And the other one is down at the end of the school year, where in May, we only have one board meeting with all of the other activities that are going on, graduation and all of that. But that leaves a very long break between the board meeting in May and the board meeting in June. So what we're proposing we do, as we are going to do this year also, is move that one board meeting in June up so that it's the first weekend or the first week in June. And then we don't have such a long interval between that, those two meetings. And it's a little bit longer interval in June, but that's during the summer when things are theoretically a little bit slower. So with that, I stand for questions.
Any questions, Board Member Tyler, Tripp? Dr. Cleveland, any comments on the, on the schedule? Okay.
Madam President, this is Board Member Tyler. I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed 2023-2024 board calendar.
Gary Tripp, I second it.
Okay, we'll just do an all in favor on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Kim.
Kim?
Okay, our next item is to consider the approval of Title III grant applications. Suzanne Nguyen, our Executive Director of Federal Bilingual and Native American Programs, will present.
Good evening, Madam President Calhrith, members of the board, Dr. Cleveland. I respectfully submit to you tonight for your approval, the Title III English Language Acquisition Subgrant Application for School Year 2023-24. As Dr. Cleveland noted earlier, the focus of the grant is to provide supplemental funding resources to assist school districts in teaching English to English learners and in helping these students meet the same challenging state standards required of all students. Students who are English learners are protected under the titles six of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, I'm sorry, yes, and the Equal Educational Opportunities Act of 1974, which require public schools to ensure that all ELs have equal access to a high-quality education and an opportunity to achieve their full academic potential. These funds are proposed to be used toward additional teachers of English learners at schools with the highest number of identified EL students, which are Puesta del Sol and Eagle Ridge Middle School. I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions? Any questions from the board? Dr. Cleveland, any comments?
This is, thank you for your hard work. It's, it's quite an application and something that we obviously have a need for. So I do appreciate your hard work.
Yeah, thank you so much. We have a motion?
Madam President, Board Member Tyler, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Title III English Language Acquisition Grant Application.
Board Member Gary Tripp, I second.
Thank you. Kim, can you take a roll call vote for us?
Carrie Scott? Board Member Tripp?
Yes.
Board Member Tyler?
Yes.
President Calhrith?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Madam President, would it be possible just to put on the record that Member Scott had to leave due to another engagement and so that that way we don't have to call her anymore on the roll?
We're unable to.
Yeah.
I know, we tried.
We tried.
So we sure tried.
And we did well. For our next item, item G, so consider the Audit Committee's recommendation regarding the extension of Accounting Financial Solutions contract to conduct the district's annual audits. And so we have Michael Madrid, our Purchasing Director, who will present. And then I know Gary Tripp also sits on that. And so if there's more, we can, he's, I'm sure, happy to, to step in. So we'll put it over to Michael.
Thank you, Board President Calhrith, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Cleveland. We did a pretty extensive options that are available to them. We talked about the consideration for extension of the current contract with Accounting Financial Solutions. And after those discussions, we voted on an action request to extend the contract with Accounting Financial Solutions for a two-year period. There was certain factors, including our ERP system and the limited resource time that staff could have if we transition outside of this. staff could have if we transitioned outside of this. And as mentioned by Dr. Cleveland earlier this morning, this does, I mean, before the, the agenda, that this does fall into the multi-year contract statute that the, not only the, the state allows in the procurement, but also within the audit rule. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
No question.
No questions? Any comments that you wanted to give or anything?
Just, like, like Mr. Madrid said, a very healthy discussion and we actually developed some, some action plans to improve a lot of different avenues from communication to reporting and so forth. So I think we're moving forward in the right direction was our, that's why we wanted to make that recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. Any more other comments?
Okay. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Audit Committee's recommendation to extend the current contract with Accounting and Financial Solutions for two years.
Board Member Gary Tripp, I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jessica Tyler and a second by Gary Tripp. And Kim, will you take a roll call vote for us?
Board Member Tripp?
Yes.
Board Member Tyler?
Yes.
And President Galbraith?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you so much. Next is our first reading to changes to Policy 1001, Student Interzone Transfers. Sherri Carver, our Executive Director of Student Services, will present.
Good evening, President Galbraith, members of the board, and Dr. Cleveland. I bring to you tonight the first reading of changes to Policy 1001. You'll see in paragraphs one and two, we just did some cleanup work in those paragraphs. Paragraph three is the paragraph that we needed to change because it had outdated information in there regarding participating in interscholastic activities. We now are proposing that it reads at the very bottom, "Transfer students who wish to participate in interscholastic activities shall conform to the eligibility rules and standards set forth in the RRPS Athletic Handbook, the New Mexico Activities Association Regulations, and in accordance with RRPS zoning policies." And those are the changes that we're proposing.
Okay, any questions from the board?
No.
We don't have to do a motion on this one.
No, I'm just, just curious why Sherri gets the low strong, gets at the end of the, the agenda every meeting.
We have all the effort. The reason she's there is because it's policy. It's always the policies. It's not personal, Sherri. I'm starting to feel something's going on. And neither is it that she loves our board meetings.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Sherri.
It's not that. All right, well, thank you so much. Thank you.
I would just make a quick comment on that last paragraph. You would not believe the complexity that open enrollment brings us in terms of athletics. And so a lot of time has gone into that handbook to try to address, for example, some changes in NNAA regulations and some other things. But it really comes when a student may try out, where a student is headed in some of our middle schools where students go both directions to Cleveland and Rio Rancho. And I won't go into all of it, but that last paragraph is very important. So if you want more information on that, we can, we can deliver that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, as we go into advanced planning, there's a couple of dates that are up and coming that we need to let Claudia know if we're going to make it to those. And those being, it's tomorrow night, Claudia, I just realized when you were asking me, I'm like, yes. So tomorrow night is the Crimson Dinner at Rio Rancho High School. And I, I believe I'll be able to attend that, so I'm going to plan to attend that. Claudia, is there any other board member that's going to be able to make that?
I gave her a maybe and I told her I'd call her tomorrow.
Okay, okay, sounds good. And I don't have my other two board members to ask, but we can text them tomorrow if you want to, if you want to know. Oh, you did? Good. Okay, perfect. And then the other one is the, the Phoenix Dinner. Did you already get RSVPs for the Phoenix? So, okay. And that is, is that a Tuesday, that day? That's the, okay.
That's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday? Okay, I think, I'll have to let you know for sure on that. I think I might have some, some children track meets and such going on, so I'll have to double check that one.
Yeah, and I won't be all the time either.
Okay, okay. So I will let you know tomorrow, Claudia, okay? And then also, and this is a great little thing, there's some other different things that are going on in the last month. I can't believe it's already the end of the school year, to tell you the truth. And some other upcoming dates, we have April 24th, which is next week, we'll have a Finance Committee meeting at 4:00, a board meeting at 5:30. We'll be doing that curriculum approval at that meeting, just so you know. On the 25th, once again, is the Phoenix Dinner at Rio Rancho. May 5th is going to be a half-day of classes for our students. And then for our other dates, please refer to the agenda and also your calendar. There are many graduations coming up, so please let us know either by responding to your calendar invite for graduations or letting everyone know that if you can be there. We'll need to probably get our robes and all of those things in order.
We'll have all.
Perfect. Wonderful. Okay. And so then for our last item is our executive session. So consider a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, acquisition, and disposable, disposal of real property or water rights to the public body, specifically for the superintendent to inform the board about potential property